And now we bring in to open the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting for Tuesday, September the 24th, 2024. We're in the Board of Supervisors' hearing room, Melody Lane, Building G, Bisbee. Pursuant to ARS 38-431.02H, the public will have physical access to the meeting place 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion and possible action. And if you would now stand and join me in the place of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. The order or deletion of any item on this agenda is subject to modification at the meeting. And the board may vote to recess to go into executive session for the purpose of obtaining legal advice from the board's attorney on any matter listed on the agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3. We began again with the roll call. District one?
Rossby is here.
District two, Supervisor English is present. District three?
Supervisor Judd is here.
We have a complete board. Members of the public may also attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app or by phone by calling 602-609-7513 or 888-680-6714. Conference ID 759137503 pound. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 520-432-9200 for direction. The board may permit public comment during the discussion of any item on this agenda. To speak to an agenda item or during the call to the public, complete and return the speaker request form to the clerk of the board by 9:00 a.m. on the day of the meeting. Would you notice that some of the attachments may be updated after the meeting is published? And this means that some presentation materials displayed at the board meeting may differ slightly from the attached version. We begin with the call to the public. I have one request and it's on Teams. Mr. Baker, are you available? Dan Baker, are you available on Teams? No?
We don't see him.
Okay, well, he had a request to speak. So we will move on from the call to the public. And the consent agenda is items one through eight.
Madam Chair, I wonder if we could break out item number one separately? And besides that, I move that we approve consent agenda items two through eight.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, unanimous and approved. And now we need to address item number one.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just wanted to read this separately since we had a couple of visitors here. And this just says, "I move we approve proclamation declaring the month of October 2024 as Employee Ownership Month in Cochise County." And as I mentioned, we had a couple representatives of such a company in their matching red polo shirts with us today. So I wanted to-
Are you colored, buddy?
Blue.
I guess I am. That's blue. I should have just said the name of the company.
Should I second that motion? I'll second that motion. Since you read it out loud.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments before I call for the-
No further comments. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved. Thank you for being here. Okay, we moved from the consent agenda to item number nine, which is in Development Services, and it's a public hearing. So let's have a motion before I open the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt Resolution 24-14 amending the Development Services fee schedule for services provided by Development Services effective August 1st, 2024.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I noticed that we have some information. So Mr. Coxworth, would you give us the information and then I'll open the public hearing?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Good morning. The county has an agreement with the Arizona Department of Housing to provide permitting, plan review, and inspection services for manufactured homes that are placed in the county and the unincorporated areas of Tombstone and the city of Douglas. This agreement with the state is advantageous to county residents. They do not need to apply for these permits from the state. They could just apply here for Development Services in Bisbee. Applying for the permit with the state does increase wait times for permitting and inspection and delay the installation of the manufactured home. In short, the agreement with ADOH benefits county residents by reducing the friction in the permitting process and better serving them. Staff does understand that raising fees is difficult, but it is necessary to align our costs with the services that the department provides with our expenses. Without this adjustment, the county taxpayer essentially subsidizes development when it should be paid for by the development that requires the permit. There's two parts to this proposal. First is aligning the fee schedule with the adopted ADOH fee schedule per the agreement. The county does retain the funds for the services provided. And then staff is also suggesting additional minor adjustments to the fee schedule for consistency across the fee schedule and adding fees for demolition permits and change of use permits for cost recovery of these administrative functions. To date, we have not received any input from the public in favor or against. This was noticed on the county's webpage for the last 120 days. It's typically 60 days, and we did basically go out in the paper.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. I haven't had any requests from the public, but always at the public hearings, if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address this issue either for or against. Any board members have comments? Yes?
Yeah, Mr. Coxworth, thank you for being here. I was wondering, does this apply to other areas of the county besides? And I thought you said two areas, and I couldn't remember. It was Tombstone, Bisbee, and Douglas, or two out of three of those?
Tombstone and Douglas and the county.
We currently have agreements with the state or the county, obviously. And then we also do the permitting for Tombstone and the city of Douglas. It's possible in the future we may do it for the city of Benson.
Um, I don't understand the relationship or how it works with the cities versus rural areas, unincorporated areas. If you could explain that to me.
They basically go, if they're in the city of Tombstone or the city of Douglas, they apply for a permit just like a resident of Cochise County would apply for that permit. We would review it, we would issue it, and we would perform the inspection. So there really is no difference.
Okay.
As opposed to their own staff doing this for, if they don't have an agreement with the state, then anybody who wanted to place a manufactured home in those jurisdictions would have to go through the state for that permitting and inspection services.
So what I understand is, just so I'm trying to figure it out, you talked about everybody in the county subsidizing whatever overage there might be in the cost of an inspection. Under what circumstances? Just so I can understand it.
The permit fees are based on an average. It's a large county. Sometimes permits are easy to review and inspection services, sometimes they're not. We have to drive further. So on average, the $650 for placement of a manufactured home, increasing that from $450, I think is fair. Development Services, as an industry standard, tries to be at least 75% funded by our permit fees or our fees for rezoning and special uses. For the last few years, we have been close to that. I think we were actually below that this last fiscal year. So we look at our, when that happens, we look at our fee schedule to see how can it be adjusted? So development is paying for the services that we're providing, and it's not being subsidized by the taxpayers of Cochise County since the department is funded through the general fund.
Okay.
And I think generally speaking, the board has the responsibility to make sure that none of our fees exceed what it costs to do that job. So-
I appreciate that.
We always ask each department, you know, make sure that they are only asking us for a fee that is reasonable and that it is, it's what it actually costs.
I understand.
That he still, they don't even ask for the full cost.
To my knowledge, the county does a very good job of that, including waste, which I was talking about earlier. So we have, we have a choice either between the taxpayers of the county subsidizing individuals and their, and their permit fees, or somehow we're subsidizing Tombstone or Douglas? Or is the state subsidizing Tombstone or Douglas?
We're not subsidizing Tombstone or Douglas. The permit fees for those come to Cochise County, and then we provide the services for plan review and inspection services.
Okay. Oh, I see that as, that's okay. I see it as subsidizing Tombstone or Douglas because we're keeping them from having to have their own department to do that. So we're either subsidizing one way or subsidizing another way. I just wanted to kind of bounce that off you a little bit. Thank you, Mr. Coxworth.
Okay, any other statements you'd like to make before I close the public?
And I might have gotten a little bit confused because I understood this is just if you get permits for installing a manufactured home. So it's just those people that are affected. No other fees window.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, we are, we have a couple of minor adjustments for the building permit renewal fee. This is for all permits for single-family homes. We're increasing that to $100, essentially to align with the fee schedule with ADOH for the manufactured home. We don't get a lot of permit extensions for homes because we changed that in the past. Every six months, it kicks the expiration out six, every inspection kicks the expiration of the permit out six months. And then we're also increasing the fee for a, for non-residential or commercial projects. And then implementing two fees, a demolition permit, which is just a $25 admin fee, and then a change of use where no other permits are required. We're implementing a fee for that fee that we didn't have previously.
I have one other question.
Okay.
Does this affect the owner-builder opt-out program at all?
It does not.
Okay, thank you.
Unless they're looking to extend their permit, then the fee went from $150 to $100. That, that applies to all single family-
A permit is a pound.
But the permit fee for owner-builder is, we raised that a couple of years ago, I think you remember, and at this time, we're not looking at raising that.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't hear any other comments. I'm going to close the public hearing. And we have a motion and a second, so I'm call for the vote unless you have other comments you'd like to make. Being known, all those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved. Thank you. The next one is a, another public hearing from Development Services. Could I have a motion, please? Well, Mr. Taylor is coming to speak to us.
Madam Chair, I move we adopt zoning ordinance 24-12 to rezone tax parcel 202-12-010A from R36 Residential. Is that next word supposed to be district? Again? Okay, residential district one dwelling per 36,000 square feet to RU4 rural district one dwelling per four acres pursuant to the application of Cynthia Griffin.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. So Mr. Taylor, give us the information on the zoning agenda.
Morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, or excuse me, Board of Supervisors members. This is the staff presentation for docket RZ 2413. The applicant again is Cynthia Griffin. The property is located on Fort Grant Road, EPM 20212010 Alpha. This is a requested downzoning from R36 to RU4 the growth area and undeclamation of her world. Existing use of the property is for metal building with living quarters. There are no new proposed uses. The property is located approximately three miles north of the city of Wilcox jurisdictional boundaries. Property is zoned R36, and as with most of the acreages around it, is significantly larger than 36,000 square feet. Staff did mail seven notices to property owners within 300 feet with no responses. Some images of the subject property. Five of 15 factors do not apply to this downzone. Factors in favor of approval complies with all applicable factors. Compatible use in an established low-density residential growth pattern. It's a downzone, so would reduce the number of allowed principal dwellings. No opposition received from nearby property owners. Staff did not identify any factors not in favor. Based on the factors in favor of approval, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the docket without conditions by a vote of seven to zero during their September 11th, 2024 meeting. And based on the factors in favor of approval, staff also recommends approval of docket RZ 2413 without conditions. And Madam Chair, this concludes staff's presentation of docket RZ 2413.
Board members have any questions or comments?
Not at this time.
No.
With no more information being saw, I'm going to close the public hearing, but I didn't get any requests to speak either for or against this. And we have a motion and a second on the floor. One more chance for comments from the board if necessary. Very known, seeing none, then I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved. Thank you, Matthew. The next one for a public hearing, could I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt Resolution 24-24 to amend the Cochise County Comprehensive Plan land use and growth area designations of five acres from neighborhood conservation to rural and category C rural community areas to D rural areas. And adopt zoning ordinance 24-13 to rezone tax parcel 101-48-005 from R36 Residential District One dwelling for 36,000 square feet to RU4 Rural District One dwelling per four acres pursuant to the application of Steve and Arlene Eastman.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'm going to open the public hearing, and you can speak during the public hearing this time. Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Supervisors. This is the staff presentation for dockets RZ 2414 and CPA 2404. The applicant is Steve and Arlene Eastman. The property is located at 653 East Border Road. That would be tax parcel 10148005. The plan amendment request is from neighborhood conservation to rural and growth area C to growth area D. The zoning amendment request of the downzone from R36 to RU4 existing use of the property is single-family residential, and that is the proposed use as well. The property is located approximately one half mile east of Bisbee Junction Road, about one mile north of the international border. And it is at the fringe of both the neighborhood conservation and growth area C categories. Additionally, the nearest property zoned RU4 is approximately 800 feet to the west. The drone imagery viewing south and to the northwest. For this plan amendment application, three of the factors do not apply to comply, and one does not comply. And the factors in favor of approval of the plan amendment, the pattern of growth does not reflect the type of growth expected in the current designation. The new designation is harmonious with existing designations. Again, three factors do not apply. Staff did not receive any opposition from nearby property owners. The factor against, it does not have substantial support from nearby property owners. And of course, substantial would be based on the number of notices that would be sent out to individuals who are within 1,000 feet as required by the plan. We only received two responses. Other rezoning factors, six do not apply, and nine of, nine factors do apply. Complies with all applicable factors, compatible with the residential growth pattern, which is very rural. Reduces the number of allowed principal dwellings. Under the current zoning, the property could be split up to five times. No opposition from nearby property owners. Factors not in favor. Staff has not identified any factors not in favor of the application. Staff mailed 32 notices to owners within 1,000 feet as required by the comprehensive plan. And we see, we received two responses in favor. And based on the factors in favor of approval, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of both dockets without conditions by a vote of seven to zero during their September 11th, 2024 meeting. Based on the factors in favor of approval, staff also recommends approval of dockets RZ 2414 and incorporates the plan amendment 24304 without condition. Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes staff's presentation.
Any other questions or comments?
No, ma'am.
No, thank you.
Okay, I have no request to speak from the public, so I will get out of the public hearing, and we do have a motion and a second. So I'm going to call for the vote unless you have other comments you wish to make. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved. So thank you, Matthew. Now we move to the action items. Item number 12.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Community Enhancement Fund expenditures for District Three, provide $15,000 to purchase new playground equipment for Wachuka City.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion with Judge since you have asked to put this on the agenda?
Yeah. So I have been reaching out to some of the communities. We do have the Community Enhancement Funds available. And it seemed to me, my district's very large geographically, that I had ignored some of the communities, and I reached out to Wachuka City and Sierra Vista and Benson because I kind of focused my funds in my corner of the county. And I asked if they had any needs, and the city or town council in Wachuka City wanted to replace some equipment in the lower Wachuka park that has been just really in bad repair. And so they'd already decided to do that. And just with the little snooping around, I found a really good deal, a good American company, and was able to kind of give them some better prices and, and it was, long story short, it was already a long story, sorry. We were able to give them $15,000 instead of a little bit more than that to get them, to get their project on, off the ground. And they're very excited and have plans for putting it together and, and some matching funds as well. So just want to ask if you would help me do that for Wachuka City.
Sounds like a good expenditure. You have any comments?
No.
Okay. Then we have a motion. We do have a motion and a second, right? After all that short explanation. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved. Item number 13, Mr. Coxworth. It's a branch, but I have a motion while he's coming forwards.
Madam Chair, I move we approve grant agreement 3-04-0049-018-2024 for architectural design and engineering services to rehabilitate the large hangar at Bisbee Douglas International, BDI Airport, funded by the bipartisan infrastructure law, BIL, in the amount of $95,531 with a county match of $4,689.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now we need an explanation, Mr. Coxworth.
Thank you, Ken, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is a grant agreement with the FAA for architectural design and engineering services to rehabilitate the large hangar at Bisbee Douglas International Airport. As you know, this hangar was constructed in World War II, and not much has happened to it since then. We did do some-
It has a new bathroom.
We have a new bathroom. We did some asbestos abatement a couple of years ago. We did root repair. But the door pockets are hanging. They're not structurally supported right now, so we're not able to open the doors. And we're really not able to lease that space to anybody who wants to base an aircraft at, at BDI. So this is really just the first step in the, the design and engineering of that project. The second step will be the remodel of the hangar. We have a total of $562,000 to do that, again, funding through the Bill Act. But that's being rolled out over a year, a number of years, and I believe we have one or two more years, and then we'll have the full amount in order to continue with that project.
Okay, any questions or comments?
What rehabilitation is going to be done? Just the doors?
It's the doors. Primarily the doors, and we're also looking at finishing the outside of it. We're having to work with State Reserve Preservation Office because of the age of the structure.
Are you going to rehabilitate the existing doors or get new, new big doors?
We're hoping to keep those doors. They do roll pretty well. Things were built pretty well back then. Yeah, they do need some the facade of it needs to be improved. They don't look too great, but the doors are in pretty good shape. It's just really those door pockets and then the coating. We removed the asbestos of the tile.
I understand they had asbestos on them.
Yeah.
We can move that already.
The roof does have asbestos as well, so we'll have to deal with that when, when we need a new roof, but.
Every little bit helps. Any other comments or questions?
I just wanted to say I'm excited about this. I got to tour it. Do we, did we do that four years ago or so? It was really neat. It's, that just airport is just neat history there.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved. I'm removing item number 14. Need a little more information. So we'll move on to item number 15. But I have a motion while Ms. Mitchell is coming forward.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Amendment Four to Intergovernmental Agreement IGA CTR055207 Public Health Emergency Preparedness Program between the Arizona Department of Health Services, ADHS, and Cochise Health and Social Services to extend the grant program through June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Mitchell?
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm here today to ask for your continued support between the Cochise County Health and Social Services and ADHS for the Public Health Preparedness Program. At the Public Health Preparedness Program, we're responsible for the preparedness and the recovery and the response of any public health emergencies, whether they're big, small, in between, we do it. Some examples that we've done in, in the last year, most recent would be the Bowie water outage. We were able to assist emergency management in helping move water from Benson Walmart to Bowie, and we were able to hang out with the community and pass out water and talk to them a little bit about what their needs were in Bowie. So that was, that was really exciting, and that was a lot of fun. Another most recent one was the hospital. There was a pretty big accident on I-10. Their ER was full. They had no beds. They reached out, asked us to help get some resources to their hospital so they can move patients out, so they can move patients out. So we were able to allocate ambulances in that area to help move those patients out so that we could get the critical patients into their ER. Some other ones that are ongoing for us are potential rabies cases and rabies cases within here in the county. We are the second highest at this time right now in Arizona. So we're constantly talking to those people that have any type of exposures. We do food and medicine recalls to our healthcare facilities, schools, and so forth to make sure that they're always updated on that stuff. We also do notifications to our ERs just in case there is an incident that could require a lot of people coming in at masses and overwhelming their ER. So we're always making sure that they're aware of those situations. And so, yeah, we're, we're always doing some type of surveillance with situational awareness for them. And we also do a lot of training. So just recently, we did SSD, Seize Man Dam. We've also participated in the cybersecurity as statewide trainees. We also did the Cochise County Active Shooter Training, and currently, we're doing five-minute tabletops within our division directors in our public health meetings so that our division directors are aware of our plans, testing our plans, making sure that they are comfortable with them and what is the protocol from other partners within the state, including our emergency management and our hospitals. Our future plans are to, one of my biggest ones is our access and functional needs population. We are, have talked to CCOM and the power company, and we really want to hit on the access and functional needs community and build a database so that if there is an emergency within that area that emergency management maps out, then we're able to get those folks out first. Whether that be somebody that is power-dependent, whether that be somebody that cannot, is, you know, bed-bound, deaf, blind, those individuals, so we can get them out first. Because obviously, they are biggest risk. If they can't move out of their house, they can't hear, they can't see, we need to get them out first. You know, and, and my example is like a wildfire. That would be one of them. So I ask for you guys' continued support in this program, and.
Why do you need to extend it? You have not spent all the money?
No, this is, this will be budget period one. We do have a budget period five that we did not spend all the money. And, but that's going to be allocated to our Department Coordination Center, which is a resource center. It's located across the street. We are building it. It will reflect like a health, like, well, emergency operations center. So that's, those BP five funding will be dedicated to that. And then BP one is for three of our personnel. Our full-time personnel, so it encompasses majority of that money. And then some of it has been towards training where we have to go out to train. So that's where the majority of that money goes.
Any other questions or comments for Ms. Mitchell?
No, thanks for being here, Ms. Mitchell.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. You gave a, a good explanation to the public of why we have a Public Health Emergency Preparedness Coordinator, so. Thank you. You gave a, um, a good explanation to the public of why we have a public health emergency preparedness coordinator. So having said that, um, any other questions or comments? And I'm going to ask, so call for the vote. All of you in favor say aye.
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 Chair vote aye and it's unanimous and approved. Thank you, Kimberly. Item number 16. Could I have a motion, please, while Ms. Hagel is coming forward?
Madam Chair, I move we approve amendment four to intergovernmental agreement IGA CTR 055282, Healthy People, Healthy Communities between the Arizona Department of Health Services and Cochise County Health and Social Services in the amount of $631,421 effective July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, Ms. Hagel.
Morning, Madam Chair and Supervisor Judd and Quasby. I would like to request approval for the HPHC IGA. We are into the fifth year of this contract. We continue to provide chronic disease prevention, teen health education and tobacco prevention and education countywide to, um, both adults and teens. Uh, we also partner with school districts and work sites to assist in the implementation of worksite wellness policies for their employees. Under this IGA, we are also tasked to conduct, um, to compile case summaries and conduct suicide mortality reviews. Um, effective this year, we have been tasked by Arizona Department of Health Services to also conduct, um, in addition to the Cochise County. Um, so, uh, cases, we will be conducting Graham, Greenlee and Santa Cruz County. And with that, we were provided an additional 75,000, um, added to this IGA this year. Um, just a few statistics, um, suicide rates in 2023 are up to 39 and in 2022 it was at 35. Um, we still have some work to do with tobacco prevention. Um, Cochise County rates fifth in the state. Uh, we were at, um, 17.6, um, for adult tobacco users. Um, and among youth, and this is just high school rates, it's at 5.3%. Um, and that doesn't include, um, middle school. However, um, we're up to 17.9 of those youth using electronic devices for the vaping. Um, teen pregnancy rates have dropped some, but we're still at 25.6 versus the state rate is at 18.7%. We still have work to do, but, um, I ask for your continued support and the approval of this IGA.
Prevention, um, always difficult.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments?
Ms. Hagel, thank you for being here. I noticed that you had moral issues like abstinence. Could you tell me how you address those moral issues?
Um, our curriculum is provided, um, by the state. We can only use the curriculum that is, um, allowed by the state. Um, abstinence is our primary, um, delivery. However, the curriculum that we do use also includes, um, what we call abstinence plus. So we do provide, um, the instruction or education on, um, contraception.
Okay. So, uh, there is, there is no moral instruction, no moral element to it. What, what does the state have to say about? Because that's a moral issue. That, that's all I'm pointing out and I'm not against it at all. Uh, so here, the other one is with regard to veteran suicides. I'm going to be going to a Marine Corps League meeting tonight at the Warrior Healing Center, which I am, uh, involved in and that is a constant, a constant topic is, is suicide. I noticed that your literature did say that suicides are preventable and I believe that also. And I, I believe the, the primary issue there is isolation. Or if somebody feels isolated. Okay, no more questions. Thank you, man.
Any other questions or comments?
Just, I wanted to make sure that you were aware and at kind of an announcement. We have Wilcox against substance abuse. It's been, it's like 40 years old now.
Yeah.
And we haven't had a director since Sally White retired, but we do have one now.
Yeah.
So Clary Cunningham, I want you to find her if you haven't already found her.
Yeah, we have partnered with them in the past and I know that there's been some turnover there, but.
But she's, she's back in full force.
Okay.
So Paul Wassa again. Thank you.
We will do that.
Okay. A really worthwhile programs for prevention. Thank you, Suzanne. If there's no other comments or questions, then I'm going to call for the vote. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Chair vote aye and it's unanimous and approved. Uh, state and federal legislation, I have, uh, nothing to report. Mr. Karwatska, you have a administrator's report?
Yes, the county fair starts tomorrow and it goes till Sunday. So, uh, I know we're providing tickets and there's some additional benefits for county employees that, uh, the clerk of the board will soon today, uh, pass out to the rest of the county employees so they.
It starts this week, you know, so.
It's, yeah, it starts tomorrow.
Starts a day early, right? Eight Thursday and now it's Wednesday.
Yeah, now it starts Wednesday.
Okay.
And that concludes my announcement.
Current events, District One, we already found out you're going to the Healing Warrior Center. Anything else?
Yeah, well, I got my VIP bracelet, so I'm real happy about that.
I guess he's going to the fair too. He's going to wear it downtown.
Everywhere.
Here this. Okay, District Two, I have nothing to report, but the fair is in my district and certainly, uh, want all of you to participate. The county is a financial supporter as well as a moral supporter of the Cochise County Fair. Uh, District Three?
Um, Rex Allen Days is now on the horizon. Um, it's, if you're not familiar with it, you can find out all about it by looking it up online, but um, basically there's, it's been around for 72 years now. And it has, there's a rodeo and it was started by Rex Allen himself to support the hospital and they still donate to the hospital. So it's a, it's a fun family rodeo parade, all the things that you could want, a carnival for the kids. Um, if you don't get enough at the fair this week, we definitely can provide a lot of fun next week, next weekend. So it's the fourth, fifth and sixth of October, so.
Okay. Having said that, um, I'm usually provided when the next meeting is, but I don't see it in writing on here. You want to give me that information? The clerk?
I have.
Okay, so before we leave this, I need to let you know that our next meeting is October the first, a special meeting, 10 a.m. Having said that, this meeting is adjourned.